Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 7th Board Meeting. At this time, I would like to introduce myself and my flagrant to the flag of the United States of America. This is a problem for which we stand as one mission under God in this law. Let me make a conscious call.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to announce that the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notice is announced at date, time, and place for this meeting to send to all concerned individuals, associations, and sent to Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975. Mr. Prime.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Justice.
Here.
Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Cho.
Here.
Vice President Cologne.
Here.
President Bonn.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, welcome, everyone. I think it's spring, but I'm not quite sure. But things are looking up. I think the sun will actually appear tomorrow, which makes tomorrow a great day. And today is indeed opening day of America's pastime. So it's a great day to be a hilltopper, a great day to finally realize spring. It's also a great day to listen to a presentation about investing in our future from Superintendent Huff and Ms. McCann. And Mr. Jess, you speak in here?
I'm like, yes.
Fantastic. Let's take a listen.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's certainly been a very, very busy last few years for us here at Summit and throughout the state. Everybody in this room knows it well, and everybody at home. We've been dealing with, obviously, the pandemic, and things are looking better. We're looking to the future. Things seem to be improving, and I just want to take another opportunity to say thank you to all the teachers, all the administrators, the custodians, the parents, the students, mostly the students. All that you've been able to deal with and get through over the last couple of years is quite remarkable. And our community here in Summit, we really did it together. It was really a community effort. Many, many challenges, but hopefully, like I said, the worst of that's behind us, and we're looking to better times as restrictions are lightening and we're doing, we're very close back to normal right now. But we've also been busy the last couple of years working to develop plans that fit into the future vision of Summit Public Schools. Our administrative team has been doing that all through all of those challenging times of the pandemic, and that's why we're really excited here tonight to present to the board and the public the bond proposal that will support and help us achieve the future vision of Summit Public Schools. Nope, I got it. Sorry. With that, there are two drivers in this bond proposal that really helped us get to where we want to be. Number one is facilities and facility upgrades. Summit Public Schools have outstanding facilities. It's one of the hallmarks of what we're known for. All of our facilities K to 12. We work hard to maintain them. We're constantly evaluating to upgrade and enhance them, and that takes an investment. That's an investment in our future, and that touches every one of our students K to 12. Okay? Just last week, the county superintendent, Darryl Paul Mary, came to Summit Public Schools for a visit, and we did a tour of each and every one of our schools, all nine schools in the building and the district. And he was very impressed with our facilities. Not only our commitment to maintain them, considering some of our buildings are 100 years old, but our future foresight and vision to add on and create additional spaces that keep us on the cutting edge of technology and one of the best school districts in New Jersey. So that takes an investment in our future. So that's one driver in our bond proposal is our facilities. The other has to do with our initiative, our STEAM initiative, our board goals. There's a lot of excitement around that right now. Certainly, as you see, has we partnered with SEF to launch Phase 1 of that initiative next year by providing four innovation labs in our elementary schools, four STEAM teachers to go along with our classroom teachers in our elementary schools. It's a, it's a great commitment. It's an incredible donation. We would not be able to do it without their help, certainly not next year. So there's a lot of excitement around that. And in doing that, our multi-year goal, we've had a passionate group of teachers and administrators in our STEAM committee district-wide meeting and discussing this for over a year now, led by a Director of Education, Jen McCann. And we were developing that multi-year plan to roll that elementary STEAM goal up into the middle school, provide more opportunities for science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics to our middle school kids, and then right up here into the high school as well. So as we phase this in, and in many, many ways, science and tech, I'm sorry, the facilities on our STEAM initiative go hand in hand. So it's not just maintaining and upgrades of facilities to be on the cutting edge as one of the best school districts in the state with our facilities. It goes hand in hand with our program to give our kids the opportunities that this community deserves and expects, and we're very proud of that. So today's presentation is really meant to be a primer, just to give the board and the public an idea of where we're going and some of the work that's been done. We are prepared next month in May to give a very detailed plan with a lot more information about what that's going to look like for the district, along with other timelines and important steps that we have to do along the way in the process. But tonight, we're just going to give you an overview and a primer of where we are as it relates to those two drivers for facility and our goals for board with our STEAM initiative.
So we are nearing the end of an exhaustive planning phase, which, as Mr. Huff said, started last year, and we're hopefully concluding within the next few weeks. We've been working tirelessly with our architect and our engineers to meld the program that Ms. McCann has been working on and the curriculum with our facilities. And so for all three levels, starting with our elementary level, what we're looking to do is replacement of roofs. Our roofs have been replaced systematically over time, but now we have come to a period where there's one section left on each of our schools, so we're looking to do that. Do we need to do it now? Can we do it in the future? Installation of HVAC in all of our elementary schools. There are still some areas which we need to put air conditioning in. Window replacement, parking lots and playgrounds. We're hoping to round out our elementary upgrades by replacing and fixing and enhancing all of these aspects, which will help all of our students have a better learning environment, both inside the school and outside the school. That now brings us to our middle school. As Mr. Huff said, we've partnered with the SEF for our STEAM initiative at the elementary school level. So the next logical step is now to bring that forward to the middle school. But that's not the only thing that we're looking to do, right? Everybody knows that our middle school, which is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, is in need of some work. And so we're looking here for HVAC in the building throughout the entire school and also replacing parts of the roof which have not yet been touched. Looking to renovate the athletic field, as that is a gathering place, and the community as a whole and the community of the middle school need to have that upgraded. The parking lot, even though we do share the parking lot with the municipality, we are looking to give that an upgrade as well as it really needs it. Cafeteria and kitchen.
Yep. And before we move on to the next slide, certain things like the HA, HVAC and the air conditioning in a middle school, that's been discussed in the community for years. So it's not a new concept. It's something that we knew eventually we're going to have to take on, as well as the renovation of the athletic field. We've been in communication for a couple of years now with community groups, Summit Junior Baseball, the PTO, so that we can repurpose that field to make it more useful, not just for the middle school kids and our programs and our athletics, but the community at large that also use that field. And by repurposing some areas and redesigning, what do you call it, enhancing the cafeteria and kitchen space, we're going to be able to realize additional spaces for those STEAM labs, for those innovation labs, to bring those programs that we're talking about as far as more computer science, engineering, and design.
Yep. And now, so flowing right from the middle school, we flow now into this building, into our high school, and where we're moving our STEAM initiative forward for everybody in this school. So again, roof. We need to replace a portion of the roof on this building. Renovation of the lower athletic field, the one that fronts on Morris Avenue, you know, that's a great field now. Why not make it an exceptional field? Why not allow it for the community and the students to have another place where they can practice, where they can compete against all of our, our neighbors and all that, and also tatlock field? You know, even though that is a city-owned facility, the Board of Education uses that for our football, for lacrosse. So we're looking to enhance that area as well. And then, as I mentioned, and as Mr. Huff mentioned, this building specifically starting in this room right here to enhance it for our STEAM labs, and then also additional spaces for collaborative and individualized learning.
Yeah, and this has been a discussion from the very start when we're taking, looking about our future vision. This is a great media center, but many high schools in New Jersey are really revamping their spaces to be state-of-the-art, and that's what we look to do here. And by going up and potentially getting additional spaces in the media center for innovation labs and maybe moving our video and high school TV studio over here and repurposing some spaces for theater and dance, it really captures that complete package of steam and give our, our students opportunities that they wouldn't otherwise have.
So when, everybody I'm sure is asking, well, when do you want to do this? Well, we're looking to start today. So as you can see, today is the initial presentation, and it's very generic. It's very primary because we have yet to finalize our search with the architect, with the engineer, and to get costs, right? And so that's our next step. So May 4th, we're going to have our architect and our engineer come, and we're going to present formally to the Operations Committee. And at that time, we will have what the final project will look like, what the final costs will be, and that will be for the Operations Committee to review, discuss, debate, and hopefully approve, followed the next day by the same presentation to the Education Committee. Because we're not just doing this so that everybody feels good and so we have great facilities. We're doing it so that our great facilities help our great educational program and provide everything to our students that we need. From there, this time next month at our reorganization meeting is when we will do a formal presentation to the public and to the Board of Education, showing the plans, having the architect here to talk about what has been spoken about, and also to float what the cost of the project will be. We will do a second presentation at our June Board of Education meeting, and hopefully at that meeting, when everything has worked out, the Board of Education will approve our project so that we can move between June and September to the Board of School Estimate for a presentation and for approval, and then to the Common Council for a presentation and for their approval as well. And if all goes well, if we are able to have this project approved, we're looking at July and August of 2023 to begin construction. So it is a compressed timeline, but we have been working on this for quite some time now. We feel comfortable that we will be able to have everything in line for these presentations for everybody's review.
Yeah, and one more thing I'll say is that it really has been a lot of people contributing to this. There's a lot of hard work that's been going into the planning and, and the vision for our Summit Public Schools. And we've been, Derek and I have been in communication with the city about their timeline. So some of these steps, when we get into June and July, certainly can be pushed back. And, you know, final approval may be July, it may be September, but it fits within those windows that we're sharing here now. We'll continue to be in discussions with them as we move forward so that we'll have a better idea of exactly when those meetings are, when those presentations are, and when those approval processes will happen.
And we hope that you are all as excited, or you become as excited about this process as we are, because, you know, we are very excited to bring this forward, to provide the community of Summit with the exceptional programs and facilities that everyone deserves.
And finally, what you'll see probably from our next presentation, that this proposal and our plans for STEAM has something for everyone. This is a K to 12 benefit. All of our students will eventually go through our playgrounds, our athletic fields, our STEAM labs, our various curriculum, and it's, it's really a K to 12 experience that we're really looking forward to in the future for our district. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Of course, I have one. I'm reading a question. Thank you for putting this together. Looking at the timeline, it appears as if the next board meeting on May 12, or the board of board meetings, will be whether publicly coming here and may come.
Yes, we would invite the public to come out, hear all the details, the explicit details about the programming and the facilities, the cost estimate, the remaining timeline, and they can come in here and ask questions or comment, at least comment at that point.
Just want to make sure that you are part of this meeting tonight and you're all of our actors to get that word out on the public place in common.
Yeah.
Therefore, we would like to get your attention and allow me to talk.
And we'll also make sure that all this information is also on the website. So as we progress with our plans, with our drawings, with the, with the proposal, we'll make sure that all of that is on the website too, so that people can review that and then reach out to us with any questions or comments.
And then that's where it gets a little bit unsure at this point, if, depending on the city's timeline, that June meeting may not be a vote by the board. We may be able to push out another month, give it additional time to present and discuss, and then vote again in July. But right now, we're dependent on their timeline. Mr. Bonn? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Huff. President's announcements or comments, that's me for the last time. I can't believe it's been six years and I, it's, I don't know. It went fast, and I can't remember what I said the first time I sat in this seat. But I am honored and pleased to do this one last time, and I'm super happy to have students in the audience, because at the end of the day, you all are why we're here, and you're absolutely why I chose to be on the board. So diversity makes us smarter. Being around people who are different from us makes us more creative, more diligent, and harder working. What I'm going to share with you, I've taken from an article in the Scientific American in October of 2014, and the article is by Catherine Phillips. So this is a summary of what she says about diversity from a scientific perspective. Decades of resource by, decades of research by organizational scientists, psychologists, sociologists, economic, econo, economists, and demographers show that socially diverse groups, that is, those with a diversity of race, ethnicity, gender, and sexual orientation, are more innovative than homogeneous groups. It seems obvious that a group of people with diverse individual expertise would be better than a homogeneous group at solving complex, non-routine problems. It is less obvious that social diversity should work in the same way, yet the science shows that it does. This is not only because people with different backgrounds bring new information. Simply interacting with individuals who are different forces group members to prepare better, to anticipate alternative viewpoints, and to expect that reaching consensus will take effort. A racially and ethnically diverse university student body, or public school student body, has far-ranging and significant benefits for all students, non-minorities and minorities alike. Students learn better in a diverse educational environment, and they are better prepared to become active participants in our pluralistic democratic society once they leave such a setting. In fact, patterns of racial segregation and separation historically rooted in our national life can be broken by diverse experiences in secondary and higher education. Student Voices here in Summit Public School was created in December by student, by a student-driven initiative. The mission of the club is to provide a platform for students to promote social, cultural, and educational awareness through various events and activities that help foster inclusivity and encourage unity among the entire student body. The club meets twice a month to discuss different concerns and/or events that the students would like to highlight. They are currently working on a video about inclusivity that will be shown on the weekly TV news program and possibly at their next advisory class. Some of the past few events the club has hosted was, were a celebration of the Hindu Festival of Holi. Said that right? I said that right. I looked that up today on Google. And a lunch meeting that included making arapas, a cornmeal bread that originated in a region that is now, that now makes up parts of Colombia and Venezuela. In addition to the Holi and Arapas event, students have been updating a bulletin board that displays all of the holidays and events for the current month. There are about 25 current club members, current members of the club. Several of them are here with us tonight. And the two advisors are Monica Bartlett, Spanish teacher at the high school, and Rebecca Zarabi, did I say that right? Zarabi? Who is the library media specialist at the high school. And as I've mentioned, we have a few members of the club here tonight. I guess there's not a lot of people here, so I won't make you stand up. It's pretty obvious that they're here in the back to my left. And so I have a couple of questions. And when you're ready to ask, ask other questions, come to the mic and then please share with us. And you're on TV, so you're going into somebody's home somewhere. So do a good job.
No pressure.
Right. So tell me why you think it was important to form this club?
Hi, everyone.
And tell us her name and your grade, too.
My name is Stephanie Saxton. I'm a junior at the high school. For me and I, all of our club members, I think it was really important to create the club because looking around, you can see the diversity at Summit High School, but a lot of kids don't really understand it. They don't know about the cultures of the students they're walking next to in the hallways. And even some of our teachers don't have complete knowledge of where students come from or the different holidays they celebrate. So we really wanted to create an avenue for people to get that knowledge, and not only for them to learn, but also for all the cultures to come together, which is why we hosted events such as the Holi event and making arapas, just because we really do think that it's important to, you know, understand your peers. And as you were saying in your quote, like, the more ideas everyone can comment and the more people understand each other and different ideas are brought to the table, the more we can learn and the more that can be achieved. Thank you.
My mic keeps turning off, so we'll keep it going up. So I have a follow-up. So understanding all that, tell me about the future and what, like, like, why this matters, like, what, what do you think's going to happen next year and the year after if you all continue? Like, what value is it going to bring to the school?
Okay, so my name is Zenia Kamdar. I'm also a junior like Steph here at Summit High School. And I think that for the future of our club, right now, we're at the beginning. We're trying to see where our feet are right now, and we're trying to just start having different events, like the Holi event and the Making Arapas. And we kind of just wanted to, in the future, hopefully those events happen more often, and we kind of want to just enhance those and really harp on what our club is trying to do, which is educate and just bring more awareness to all the different communities that we have here in Summit and at the public schools. So yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. All right. I have no more questions. But I, I would, like, when I heard about your club, I, I, I knew I had to mention it as my last one. And so I want to commend you for your efforts. I wish you great success with your club. I'll check in to see how you're doing. And I, hundreds are A pluses all around, whatever you need. All right? So thank you for coming. I appreciate it. So that ends my president's announcements, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Huff.
Thank you so much, President Bonner. And there's going to certainly be plenty of time for accolades and stories and thank yous to you next month for your service to the board. But I certainly want to comment now that your passion and advocacy for diversity and inclusivity has been constant, appreciated, and you're a true leader in that area, and we appreciate having you. And to all of our kids that showed up today, wow, thank you. You know, not just for the work you do at the club, but you took the time to join us here tonight for that very important message. So well done. Have a good night. And for my report, I have the pleasure of, again, celebrating all of what is normal in Summit Public Schools and all of the great, wonderful things our various schools and groups are doing, starting with Autism Awareness Month. Staff and students across the district wore autism awareness T-shirts that were designed by one of our staff members, Manny Gomez. At both Franklin and Elementary and the Primary Centers, they hosted an awareness walk, and students drew chalk images and messages on the sidewalks outside of the school. And WPC also celebrated by creating a sign in the front entrance that was made of puzzle pieces. At the Primary Centers, we had our middle school peer leaders come down and read the story "One," and it's the power one individual can have on others. It's always nice to see our older students come down and be in a leadership role or a mentor with our younger students. It's something that really inspires our young ones to become leaders. At Franklin Elementary, they took on a project called Iditarid, as a spoof off of an Iditarod, and they read 2,000 books. And as they read the books, they completed a dog track around the school, and it went throughout the entire building. So the students, staff, and faculty participated in that. 2,000 books is quite impressive for the month of March and a creative way to get everyone engaged in meaningful reading. At Brayton Elementary School, third graders went to a field trip to Ellis Island, and they brought back what they learned to host an Ellis Island exhibit at Brayton, which was a culminating activity for their immigration unit in third grade. Washington Elementary School, they are in their second season of the masked teacher. So staff dress up in various animal outfits and costumes, and they're pretty elaborate costumes, and students have fun voting, trying to decide and guess which staff member is in the costume. And believe it or not, it's a huge, huge hit. There are plenty of videos floating around and excitement and a lot of energy in the school as a result of this fun activity. Jefferson Elementary, oh, excuse me. Jefferson Elementary School Student Council is teaming up with the Summit Police Department and the Public Works Department to spruce up the peace garden at the school. Students began the process by cleaning up trash and raking leaves along with, alongside of Summit Juvenile Detective Shawn Thompson. They plan on planting new flowers and adding painted rocks and replacing outdoor benches. And at Lincoln Hubbard, they just triumphed and celebrated their Spring Musical Shrek. It was two years ago on May, March, when the fifth grade was about to do a dress rehearsal, and the world shut down, and that cohort of students never had the opportunity to participate in that Spring Musical. So you fast forward to today, and as we ran the Shrek musical with our Class of 2022, we also had the opportunity to invite back some of the Class of 2020 and join in the final song, "I'm a Believer." And it was quite a moment, something to celebrate and a milestone for our students, and shows their commitment and resiliency. At our middle school, our eighth-grade Spanish teacher, Melissa Saracino, was selected as Teacher of the Year by the Foreign Language Educators of New Jersey. Each year, they identify an exemplary world language teacher who personifies and promotes the best in the profession. And Ms. Saracino will be honored at the annual conference in the spring and will complete, compete at a regional level at the Northeast Conference on the Teaching of Foreign Languages. Congratulations to her. That's outstanding. Happenings at the high school. This past couple of weeks, we celebrated a ribbon cutting for our weight room. Again, many thanks to SEF and the Booster Club for their donations. It's quite a facility. All of our student athletes, all of our physical education athletes, and all of our staff will definitely take advantage of that room as they have. It's state-of-the-art, and we're very proud of that. And that ribbon cutting went very well. And our speech and debate team won second place in the overall team sweepstakes award and second in overall speech sweepstakes at the New Jersey Speech and Debate League State Championship. We need some of those speech kids to read this, because it's, it's quite challenging. Four students ranked first place in the state, and more than 20 students ranked as finalists. The four state champions will be recognized at the Governor's Awards in Arts Education in May.
And we have one behind the camera right here.
Outstanding. The department also hosted the District Arts Festival, where our band, orchestra, and choral groups performed right here in the high school. And it was great to see this back in person, and it was very well-attended, and they all sounded great. I attended as well. It was just a great night to see everybody participating back in person. And last night, the high school chamber orchestra, the chamber choir, and wind ensemble performed at the New, at the, at the New Jersey Pack Prudential Hall, and they sounded great. It was quite a treat for, to be in that, that center. I was there as well. It was great, and they did very well. They sounded excellent. And what was very interesting about this is that they premiered a piece of music that was commissioned by the SEF and for a wind ensemble, and the piece was written was commissioned by the SEF and for a wind ensemble, and the piece was written by a SHS alum, Jordan Galanek. So she was working with our current students. She's currently a doctoral student at Juilliard, Juilliard School in New York City. So alum coming back to give to our current students, again, demonstration of community. In the world of athletics, congratulations to senior Olivia Lawler, Summit High School's NJSEAA Scholar Athlete of the Year. This year, Olivia has been the Varsity Soccer Starting Goalkeeper, the Varsity Basketball Captain, and 1,000-point scorer, and Captain of the Varsity Spring Track. Congratulations. Speaking of track, winter track and field, Boys 4x4, new school record, Group Three Champions, and number three in New Jersey, and number 12 they placed at the Nationals. Our Boys Sprint Medley Relay, new school record, and ranked and came in number three in New Jersey as well. Our Girls 4x4, New Jersey number 12, and our Girls Sprint Medley Relay, New Jersey number five. And finally, Lower Coda, 13th All-County. Each month, when I have the opportunity to read the highlights as we continue to get back to normal, it's, it's just so encouraging of the talent that we have in our students, the commitment that our staff give to our students to allow them to achieve, and makes us all proud to be here in Summit. And finally, next week is spring break, so on behalf of myself and the board, we wish everyone a happy and healthy spring break. That concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, as many of you know, every three years or six years, somebody, uh, comes on and comes off the board typically after six. Uh, all members of the Summit, uh, School Board are term limited to six years, and so, Mr. Cologne is gonna honor one of our own, who will be, this will be her last meeting in her sixth year, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Cologne.
Yeah, and I've been, actually been peeking.
There you go.
I've been peeking over at Vanessa over the course of this meeting, and I don't know that I've seen her smile as much as she's been smiling for this meeting, um, so that's saying something. Um, thank you, President Bonner, and, and your words are coming next month, and so you will not be neglected. Um, but for Vanessa, um, I've served on the board with you, uh, for four years. Uh, there are a few milestone events that come to mind when I think about your contribution to our district and the board. I'll, I'll mention a few. Vanessa spearheaded the board's support and approval of Full Day Kindergarten, which was my first year on the board. Um, as president, Vanessa navigated us through the governance issues, uh, issues surrounding a superintendent resignation. Uh, and I'd also note, uh, she led the subsequent transition to a talented and capable interim superintendent, uh, while we awaited Mr. Huff coming onboard. Vanessa was also the first Board of Education President to confront COVID-19. Um, and as such, she was our leader for the district's initial response to the pandemic. Fortunately for her, she didn't have a full year tenure as Board President, uh, but as the initial president, uh, that initial response included, as we all know, the urgent shift to remote learning for our students and our staff. Uh, and during the summer of 2020, she applied her deep and extensive legal knowledge in overseeing the drafting of the district's 78-page, I had to go back to see how lengthy that document was, 78-page reopening plan. Um, and, uh, that's the first time in a little while that I went back to look at that document, and I hope to never look at it again. Beyond these larger achievements, Vanessa contributed to the work of our board meaningfully and consistently during her two full terms. Uh, I'll also note that while she was being a supermom, raising three wonderful and talented girls, and also serving, most recently, on the PTO President's Council. She is passionate about the education of every single one of our 4,000, uh, public school students, including our students with special needs, different learning styles, and those within our ESL program. She is passionate in her support of our teachers, supervisors, and building leaders, and passionate about fulfilling her responsibility to our community as a member of this board. We're going to miss Vanessa's leadership, her drive, and her passion. I personally am also going to miss the many phone calls we had, uh, that started with, "Am I crazy or?" We haven't had as many of those, I'm, I'm actually thankful for that, but there was a period where we had a few. And despite occasionally trying to shake the law degree out of Vanessa, I'm going to miss the valuable perspective that she's offered us in contract negotiations, policy drafting, regulatory interpretations, employment matters, and the inevitable messy legal circumstances that arise in governing a school system. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with you on this board, and I hope that we can share that glass of wine or the Jamesons we've been talking about, uh, for, for some months now. Uh, on behalf of this board and all of the former board, uh, members that have served with you, thank you for your service.
Do you want to use?
Yeah.
You can have it, I care.
I'll give it back to you.
Ms. Primack, did you have any comments, or do you want to save that for next week, or you? You don't have to say anything, it's all.
Thank you so much for those lovely words, and indeed, um... Chris, you said at the, at our budget meeting, that your service has been one of the great honors and privileges of your life, and I just want to echo that sentiment. It really has been an incredible honor and privilege to serve the community in this way. If I go into a Whitney or other things, we'll be here all night, and quite frankly, for a last meeting after the past six years, I don't think any of us want to go. But I, of course, will, uh, just again, reiterate my thanks to my, my current board members that I've served with, all the prior board members that I've served with. I've learned from each and every one of you, I'm very grateful. And of course, I'm very grateful to the many people, especially my family, who's facilitated this. It's been, it has been a ride of the six years, and, uh, when we, when we started, my oldest was finishing second grade, and she will be walking through these doors as a student in the pumper, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of great things that we, I think we've all done. And I know there are even greater things in the future that will be done, so thank you again, and it's been a truly an honor.
Right, thank you, ma'am. Time to get down to business here. Let's go for superintendent, superintendent's report. Get a motion on A and B, please.
Move. For the role, Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, committee reports, as is the custom, Education Committee.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. I am, um, happy to report on behalf of the Education Committee. All the wonderful things that, um, we are doing, although I think that nothing can compare to the long litany of things that our superintendent just shared, and seeing our students here and having successful students in our midst, that's, I mean, that's the proof in the pudding. However, I do have some minutes to share with the board. So, uh, the committee met on March 31st for an hour, uh, with me, were Superintendent Huff, Doreen Babas, Jennifer McCann, and of course, my fellow board members, Yan Cho and Lita. We got an exciting first look at the autistic awareness T-shirt that the superintendent just described, and, um, I don't need to describe it again other than to say that sharing these things in committee is just, it's, it's proof and a manifestation of our, our commitments and our goals, um, being activated. And so we just loved seeing that T-shirt. Thank you for sharing it. Uh, we had a professional, a professional development recap. We have been getting recaps throughout the year, and, and we've been sharing them with you, so I won't take you through the, you know, the ribbon wrapping of it all. But what I, I do want to share is that the district will begin working on next year's professional development matrix. Um, that's in development, I have nothing to share other than to say that the committee is assured that, per usual, um, the matrix will include things that are appealing and relevant to teachers and staff as well as pertinent to our goals and our focuses. And we look forward to seeing that matrix. One highlight that I can share is that, um, we do have our new STEAM teachers who will be sooner or later coming onboard. I hear that we do have some, um, candidates, um, that are, that are interviewing. Um, and hopefully in June, when they are here, Jefferson's, uh, current STEAM instructor, our very own Ms. Schuman, will take those new teachers through, um, through what she's learned, share what she's learned, share the philosophy of our STEAM programming, um, our STEAM initiatives, and then really deep dive into each of the levels and what it means. So once again, love that in our community, we share our knowledge. Ms. Schuman volunteered to do this because she's passionate about it, and, um, that will be, I think, one of the first, uh, PD activities that will occur. Ms. Babas shared a job description, which you all got in your, um, in your board packet. It was at the, it was found at the end of the agenda. A new, uh, job description for an in-district mental health clinician. Uh, that is a pensionable, tenurable position, uh, which has been budgeted for and will be covered by grant money. And it will make further contracts with our Rutgers clinician, no longer necessary. Um, the benefits of having an in-district clinician are financial, we'll be saving, um, we'll be saving money, certainly not having to contract out. We'll be having someone who is one of our own, learning our students, learning our community that much better. Someone who'll know our philosophy, our, our children, our teachers. And, uh, the position is slated to begin in September, and if we can find a suitable individual before that time, um, then, then that hire will hopefully come in earlier at that time. Um, I do want to say that we have always been very pleased with our, our clinicians from Rutgers. They've done a tremendous job for us. It has really nothing to do with their, um, impact, uh, and their service to us. It more has to do with now's the time, uh, to, to have an in-person, an in-district person. And we're gonna make that happen. You will see that, um, well, I'll say that in a second. We also got a STEAM update. Um, obviously, everybody, uh, in the community and in the district is very excited about the things that have been unveiled, um, and the support that SEF has given us in order to make those things happen. Um, and, uh, the committee learned that programming is coming together in greater detail, so we should be seeing that soon. And then we got a question, uh, we had a conversation really about, about what these new opportunities are gonna look like, and I want to make clear on behalf of the committee that our STEAM opportunities are being created to include all interested students, particularly at the elementary and middle school levels. This is about exposure, it's not about taking, you know, um, those who have an affinity for science and giving them more, although we will do that. It's about, um, really ensuring that every student has an opportunity to, um, interact in some way with, um, the STEAM disciplines. The opportunities are also going to be holistic and use some cross-discipline approaches. So for example, and I love this example, at the high school, we, you already approved, um, a new, um, extracurricular a-activity, what are they called? It's not a cycle, are they? Elective, they're called cycles in the middle school, an elective, um, for theater set design. And so when you think about that elective, that includes engineering, it includes arts, it includes robotics, it includes visual and fine arts, it includes architecture. So just by taking that elective, um, you really can, uh, learn a tremendous amount, and, and we will do our best to approach as many as are of our, um, STEAM opportunities in that way. That's all that we discussed. We do have a recommendation that the board approve, the mental health clinician job description, which is in personnel, it's, um, letter K. Our next meeting is in May, it's scheduled for May 5th, but, um, I may need to flip that, just letting you all know, at 3:00 PM. And that's it for me. Did I miss anything? Yan on video and Valida, live and in person?
Nothing from my antenna.
Thank you, you're, you're excellent, by the way, I want to say, as a, as a video participant. Any questions?
We don't want you in person.
We don't, but you, you're, you're doing a great job. Any questions? All right, that's it for me.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Okay, uh, operations, Mr. Cologne?
Yes, thank you. The Operations Committee met on March 30th, um, in person. Uh, the length of the meeting was quite extensive, a little over two and a half hours, so two hours, 40 minutes. Uh, in attendance, uh, from the board, myself, Melanie Cohen, Yan Cho, uh, administration members, uh, Superintendent Huff, Derek Jess, and Emilio Torres. Actually, I'll, I'll touch upon some of the items that, that we reviewed quickly and then get to the media points. Um, we, uh, we reviewed the food services, um, P&amp;L for the year. Uh, happy to report that it was positive in the month of February, uh, to the tune of 23,583, uh, making the total year-to-date P&amp;L, 118,000, um, in, in the positive. So, so that's a good result. Uh, we also reviewed, uh, the replacement of printers and copiers for the district, uh, which is underway. Uh, there is a, uh, a slight savings associated with this due to the updated lease terms associated with the new equipment, uh, and so that was relatively quick to cover. Uh, we also reviewed a request from Summit Junior Baseball and Softball for a concession shed, uh, at Jefferson Field, uh, which would be fully funded by Summit Junior Baseball and Softball. Uh, the committee approved this project, subject to the blessing of Principal Cordero, which has been obtained, uh, and compliance with all relevant zoning and safety guidelines. Now to the, the media topics that consumed most of that meeting. The, the business office invited two insurance brokers, uh, to the meeting to present their services. Uh, these two presentations followed, uh, a presentation from the district's current broker, or I should, should I say then-current broker, uh, Brown &amp; Brown, which was provided to the committee, um, in early March. So after these, uh, two presentations from the two brokers, uh, the committee discussed the strengths and weaknesses of each broker, as well as the ability of each to implement the most appropriate health benefit solutions for our district going forward. Uh, after this discussion, a decision was made by the administration to terminate Brown &amp; Brown and select Gallagher as the district's health insurance broker. Uh, this decision was unanimously supported by the committee. Um, and, and with that decision, there will now be a, a follow-on update regarding the benefits programs themselves for the district and its employees, uh, for the 22, 23 school year, so stay tuned for that. Um, we also spent a fair amount of time, uh, on the topic of facilities. And so the business office, as was discussed earlier in this meeting, completed the comprehensive facilities planning exercise to identify the projects that would address the major maintenance needs of all district buildings and property, as well as the projects that would meaningfully enhance the learning environment and educational programs available to our students. Uh, I won't review the, the projects since they have already been presented, uh, by Superintendent Huff. Uh, the, uh, the funding for these projects, as was noted, um, is substantially in excess of any funds available within the district's operating budget. Uh, and so that's, uh, it's quite evident based on the scope of some of the things that we discussed earlier. And for this reason, uh, the administration, uh, has initiated the conversations mentioned with respect to, uh, the Summit City Finance Office to evaluate the issuance of a municipal bond for these projects. The financial terms of this potential bond issuance, principal amount of interest, amortization, et cetera, uh, have not been determined in any way, shape, or form, uh, nor have they been presented since they haven't been determined. And as was noted, uh, that presentation- Our next meeting will be May 4th at 4:30 PM. That was a mouthful. And so, Melanie and Jan, anything that I may have missed?
Nope, not for me.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Okay. President, back to you.
All right, excellent. Moving on to policy. Mr. Cho, I think you have a stand-in to read for you, correct?
Well, I think the audio is working okay. Tell me, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, it's good.
Yep.
All right. Your luck, Melanie.
Yeah. Speaking of mouthful.
All right. So, the policy committee met on Wednesday, March 30th, for approximately 45 minutes, from 3:30 to 4:15. Committee members in attendance were Scott Huff, Rob Gardella, Kathleen Murphy from the district staff, and then board members, Michael Cologne, Melanie Cohn, and myself. We had several revised mandated policies for discussion along with some regulations. The first is Policy 2415.05, student surveys, analysis, evaluations, examinations, testing, or treatment. This is a policy provision required by the Federal Protection of People Rights Amendment, and the policy revision updates the requirements for parental notice and written consent if the school district plans to have a student participate in a psychiatric or psychological examination, testing, survey, or treatment with the purpose of revealing information about the behavioral, emotional, and personal characteristics of a student. School districts are allowed to collect appropriate personal information for academic purposes, tests, and assessments, and such. Separately, this policy is separate from New Jersey Policy 9560, which is the New Jersey state-related mandated policy for the administration of school surveys. Same on notice and consent requirements with respect to surveys, assessments, exams that are targeting a student's behavioral, emotional, and personal characteristics. And then separately, Policy 9560 does allow a district to administer a voluntary anonymous survey, assessment, analysis, or evaluation related to student health topics, such as alcohol, drug, tobacco, vaping use, sexual behavior, self-harm, physical activities, and attrition, with just prior written notification. Policy 5460, it's high school graduation, which is a revision, and this revision provides greater clarity regarding the graduation assessment requirements for the classes of 2023, 24, and 25, given the impact of the pandemic, and updates to the high school diploma criteria for out-of-school individuals. Separately, a new section has been added to the policy that gives school districts an option to participate in the New Jersey Department of Education State Seal of High Literacy Program. So, school districts have the option for allowing graduating seniors, if they demonstrate a proficiency in English and one or more world languages, to receive a New Jersey Department of Education issued certificate and transcript notation indicating the receipt of the State Seal of High Literacy. Policy and regulation 5751, sexual harassment of students. This is a policy revision mandated by the U.S. Department of Education, amending the federal Title IX regulations regarding sexual harassment of students by school employees, other students, or third parties for K through 12 school districts. The new federal regulation revises the definition of sexual harassment and includes a detailed procedure on how public school districts must respond to allegations of sexual harassment. The regulation requires school districts to designate a Title IX coordinator. The notice requirement establishes the reporting, investigation, hearing, and appeal process requirements. And I'll note, this policy is completely separate from the Jersey state policy that addresses the Anti-Bullying and Bill of Rights Act, and the policy 55112, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. The last policy and regulation that we discussed was Policy Regulation 8465, biased crimes and bias-related acts. This policy and regulation has been updated to expand the definition of individual characteristics which are subject to biased crimes or bias-related acts involving students and school grounds to add gender identity or expression to the current characteristics, which are national origin, race, color, religion, gender, disability, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. All such biased crimes or related acts must now be promptly reported to local police and county prosecutor, and then if there's any situation that could potentially involve violence or student safety, must be immediately reported to the local police and the county prosecutor. In terms of recommendations to the board, first readings of Policy 2415.05, 5460, and 9560, along with the policy regulations, revisions, 5751, and 8465, and then the second reading of the policies from prior month's agenda. And then our next meeting is Wednesday, May 4th, at 3:30 PM. Melanie, Michael? I know there's a lot there.
There was a lot there. I think you got it.
You can't see left and right in here. You can only see forward.
Everyone's nodding, Jan.
You're good, yeah. Okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Cho. Communications Committee did not meet, right?
We did not meet. That doesn't mean communications were not going on. It just meant that there wasn't a particular driving for us to meet. Obviously, I hope you've all been enjoying the many wonderful communications about the district, although I don't think the lightsaber duel from the District Arts Festival was included, should have been. I just will take a moment, if I may, to thank members of the committee, just Mr. Bonner, of course, Ms. Callender, Mr. Orr, and Mr. Huff. It's been, I think, a really a great year. I think a lot of really wonderful discussions took place, and it was sort of fun to have a month where there just wasn't some hot topic to discuss. We are meeting on the 28th of April. There will be a communication survey going out, so we will have a discussion about that, and I look forward to it, and I trust Ms. Justice will be able to share those, the outcome of that meeting, since you will be the lone member standing for the meeting. So, but thank you all very, very much. It's been a great year on the committee.
Excellent. Thanks, Ms. Primack. Ms. Callender is getting educated, by the way, if you haven't noticed. She's not here, but she's getting her graduate degree as we speak, so good for her. Negotiations, we did not negotiate with anyone. And did we liaise with anyone over the past 30 days?
I liaised with SEF, but I think we're all quite aware of the results of that.
I enjoyed the SEF event on Friday night. That was great.
Excellent. Okay. So, some liaising, and it ultimately resulted in a couple of teachers for the district, right? So, that's a good outcome, right? That's a great outcome. Okay, that closes committee reports for the evening. Moving on to public comment. Any public comment for items? Wait, I'm ahead of myself. Browners?
I was so excited.
Would you like to read them for your last meeting?
I do not want to read them.
No, I'm sure.
I'm going to invoke executive privilege and let you handle that.
Anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition by the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and clear audible tone for the record. All comments should be directed to the board president and not an individual member of the board. Unless additional time is granted by the board president, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. In addition, please note that this portion of the meeting is for public comment and not meant to be back and forth. Board members and administration will not respond to questions or comments at this time. Information will be provided as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. Now, any public comment for items on the agenda? Seeing none? Any public comment for items not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none? We did not have any comments, so we need a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So, move. All right. Moving on to the remainder of the meeting. We are, like, way ahead, which is phenomenal. We need to prove some minutes from our last meeting and the two special budget, the special budget meeting and then the budget adoption meeting that occurred at City Hall. So, I can get a motion on all three of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, move.
Aye.
Moving on to finance. We have items A through... Did we get a double letter? No, we did not get a double letters tonight, A through Q. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second.
For the role, Ms. Primack?
Yes, with the exception of J, I will stay as an officer of the LCJS and the CTO.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. School Board Operation, item A, to install the concession stand shed at the Summit. Where's that going? Going Jefferson. Yeah, there it is. It's Jefferson. We have an item A, but no B. Is that actually authorized, Ms. McCann? Can you have an A without a B when you're outlining?
Sure.
All right. I thought that was, I thought you couldn't do that. Maybe that's changed. So, we only have item A. Can I get a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to personnel. A through R, A through R. Can I get a motion?
Moved. Second.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to personnel. A through R, A through R. Can I get a motion?
Moved. Second.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Indeed, yes.
Motion carries. Okay, policies and regulation. We have several for first reading that Mr. Cho spoke of, and then also a few for second reading from last time. Can I get a motion on all of those policies?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohn?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion carries. My understanding, we do not have a need for a closed session. Thank you for the gift, Superintendent Huff. So, that puts us to adjournment. So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, that's all me, yes.
And I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:06.
All righty.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Jan.
I started two minutes late. It's an hour and a half.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Cho. City Hall ups.